Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 10, 2022, meeting of the Pennfield Planning Board. We have some special guests here with us this evening who are going to lead us in the pledge. We have Weeblo's Den from Cub Scout PAC-80. Welcome, guys. And if you would, help us say the pledge. All right. Terrific job. Terrific job. You are welcome to stay for the duration of the meeting. It's going to be a fairly lengthy meeting. We start off with a work session, and then we go to a public hearing. And what that means is that the public hearing gives the opportunity for members of the public to comment on the things that we do. And what we do on the planning board is what's called site plan and subdivision approvals. So let's say somebody has a big piece of land, and they want to build a bunch of houses in neighborhood. They come before us with those plans, and we take a look at them. And the town staff, engineers, and public works people, and fire marshal, and everybody looks at those and reviews them to make sure that they're appropriate and acceptable. And the site plan part is, let's say Target wants to build a new store, or tonight we have a car wash and dry cleaners. So if you're more than welcome to stay and see how that goes, or if you have homework to do, that's okay, too. So Lori, would you please call a roll?
Hetske.
Hetske here.
Aiken.
Aiken here.
Burton.
Burton here.
Canower.
Canower here.
Tidings absent. Sangster.
Sangster here.
Wyshar.
Wyshar here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Dubruck.
Dubruck here.
Gray here.
Okay. We have minutes from February 10, and hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to review them. Maybe we can entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
All right. So I guess my sales pitch didn't really go over that well. Good night, folks. I don't know why they don't find it as exciting as we find this. All right. Doug, you want to start going through our tabled items?
All right. Tabled application number one is the past stone development. Again, we have no new information. Still waiting on revised plans and responses. So no action is required by the board tonight.
Okay.
Our second tabled application is the arbors at Pennfields. Since our last meeting, we've received responses to the tabling resolution and to the PRC memo. We did just, as well as revised plans, we did just receive those today. So we will provide you physical copies for further review at subsequent meetings. They, Mark Valentine also appeared on their behalf last night before the town board to discuss the sidewalk waiver.
The sidewalk waiver.
From this town sidewalk policy. The town board discussed it last night, but ultimately chose to table it pending future review and potential additional information from the applicant on how the sidewalks are going to connect, interconnect between the neighboring properties, and the suitability of the multi-use trail as functioning as a substitute for the sidewalks along the frontage.
Okay.
Before you leave the topic, what was Mark's general thoughts on what they're proposing to replace our conventional sidewalk with?
Mark really gave an objective overview. They brought up the site plan and reviewed it, the Phase 1 site plan with the town board, reviewed it with them, looking at the width of the sidewalk, the function of how it would work. So they did address, or Mark did address, you know, the potential for additional connection points to bring it out to 250, especially that one being further away from the road. They also discussed the requirement in that if they did look at it as being acceptable for waiver, that public access would need to be, you know, there would need to be a concrete way to enforce the public accessibility that these would function essentially the same as having dedicated sidewalks along the property frontage. So the largest points were, or the most significant points that they discussed were, you know, the potential to move the sidewalks a little closer on to the 250 side, you know, the potential for them to show how their multi-use trail would be able to easily interconnect to neighboring properties and future developments so that they didn't just end up with a bunch of awkward stubs, as well as the potential sidewalk fee waiver and what the fee cost would be. This is the first sidewalk waiver we're looking at within the mixed use district. The other applications so far have either not requested it or have installed sidewalks along the frontage for their property. So the town board did request additional time to conduct a more thorough review of the proposal and potentially request additional information from the applicant as well as the planning board.
Okay. All right. So probably should continue tabling this based on, you want to move?
Sure. I'll move that we continue table this application.
I'll second it.
All right.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Okay. So just a little point. We have two members sitting there for the work session portion of the meeting. We're trying to do the best job we can for our work sessions. We used to sit around the table in the back. So if it looks kind of strange, it's because we're trying to create as much normalcy as we can with the way the TV cameras are set up and all that stuff. So there's two board members sitting there, just so you know. Okay.
In the line of fire.
In the line of, right. Exactly.
All right. Tabled application number three is the Pennfield Heights application. Staff received revised plans at the end of February and responses to the latest tabling resolution and PRC memo. One of the requests of that PRC memo was a lighting or photometric plan. So that is one of the newer submissions that they have provided since the last meeting is a photometric plan. The biggest takeaways from the photometric plan is, you know, they revised some of the lighting up by building A and building F. Those two buildings changed from their previous submission in terms of size and layout, and they revised the lighting accordingly. Additionally, they're providing pedestrian scale baller lighting around the outside ring of the multi-use trail around the stormwater management pond and on the east side of the property. They are not proposing at this time any lighting along the west side of that trail between required exterior lighting on the building as well as any of the porch lighting. It may be sufficient to adequately provide lighting for the, sort of, the west side of the pond.
You're talking about right by building E?
Right by building E. Correct.
One thing that I noticed, I couldn't find the up-down cylinders on there anywhere. So I'd like to know what, where those are proposed to go.
Okay. And part of it is, I do know in printing that this map, it, the locations of the fixtures are not always easy to ascertain on this map. So that was something I believe we requested the last time, too, was they make the location of all the lighting a little bit more accessible. But we can certainly request that, and a detailed cut sheet of the bollard light.
I'm sorry. So you're saying that on the backside of building E where the pond is, they think that the light fixtures attached to the physical building are going to be sufficient to light, though?
So what they're, it appears is that the part of the trail that's closest to building E?
Yeah.
On the pond side of building E, that yes, you're correct with that assumption.
Okay. So that kind of, it's concerning in that it, it's a pond, a body of water, small children. I would think that people would want it to be as well lit as possible at night?
And so there's, there is certain, so in addition, the darker circles that you're seeing on the plan there are sort of the lighting areas around potential lights on the east and the south side.
Can you zoom in?
On the west side, there are three exterior entrances, primary mandors to the building. Each of those is going to be required to have exterior lighting.
Keep zooming.
Additionally, there's a number of porches serving individual units, which will also have their own exterior lighting. So between the light flood from the building mounted lighting, as well as whatever residents keep on, may be sufficient. I would leave it up to the board if you guys are comfortable, if you'd like.
I mean, right now, I'm looking at 0.0 foot handles based on the rendering that they did. But that's not taking, I'm sure that's not taken into account any building.
I don't believe so.
Which is, again, why I want to see the up-down cylinders.
You can't, you can't rely on the residents to keep those lights on. They might be, they might go to Florida for the winter, you know.
Right.
They might work, you just don't know. So.
Yeah, I'm kind of with you with the, have bollards go around the west side, too.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Additionally, provided with their responses was a response to a request of the board to show a diagram and percentage of, indicating the percentage of building D that exceeded the 55-foot height requirement. They did provide a diagram of that indicating that, you know, if you're looking from the 250 side, the west side of the building, looking east, approximately 0.7% of the square footage of the roof would be above that. If you're looking from the east, looking west, so you're at the back of the building, looking, looking towards 250, approximately 4% of the building's roofline exceeds 55 feet.
Okay.
So I think we need to just note for the record here that due to some unfortunate technical difficulties with, with how we get our information from the town staff, the information was unavailable to us until recently, very recently. So there's some new information on this application that we haven't been able to thoroughly review and vet. And that's, that's one of those things. So.
So we're going to continue to review that. Any other summations you want to make on this, Doug, before we move on?
No, those are the two major, third item. Again, this was a recent discussion with the applicant. They provided two scenarios. So one of the requests in the last tabling resolution was for them to consider they're at approximately 17.2% non-residential, was to consider ways.
Getting up over 20%.
They could get up over 20%. They did provide two scenarios, just sort of ideas on what they could do to reach 20% within the development.
So I don't think we go through those right now because the information just became available today. So for that reason, we need to continue to table this application.
All right. Why don't you move it?
Move to continue tabling.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
All right. We, an update on our held item. Based on the conversation at the last board meeting, a letter was sent to the applicant requesting a response by our April 28th work session. That has been a held item before the board going on two years now. So we just wanted to see where they're at. One last item, we have one new business item. The scores of subdivision, 1700 Baird Road, was originally approved back in February of 2021. They just came up on their one year for approvals. They are requesting a 90-day extension to get the plot filed and to finalize some site plan, get the final mileage before town staff for signatures.
Okay. I don't, is there any reason why we?
They initially said they were pausing just due to the cost of lumber during COVID.
I don't have any, I don't personally have any issue with anybody.
I think, though, as we've done in the past, I think we should give them 120. If you're going to give them 90, give them 120. If there's another hiccup, they don't have to come back and ask for permission to test it. So.
You can do that.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I will second.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Okay. I believe that ends our work session portion. Correct. I think what we want to do right now is maybe take a five-minute recess while our two board members who graciously volunteered to sit across the Red Sea from us come on back up. And then our first applicant, we'll begin the public hearing as soon as TV's ready and all that stuff. But first applicant on the agenda is Marathon. So we putting them there or there? Where's the, where's the?
It's over here.
Okay. So if you want to, do you have your laptop that you want to, you kind of want to drive the bus with your presentation? Or do you? Okay. So Catherine can work, okay. So come on up here and get yourself situated, and then we'll begin as soon as everybody's ready to go. So for now, we'll be in a short recess. Okay. Well, thanks, everyone, for that short recess. And we'll begin the public hearing portion of our meeting. Our process works in the following way. The applicant will present their project to the board. Board will then ask what questions we have that come to mind at that point in time. And once that's complete, we'll open it up for audience and participation from the public. Public participation can take a variety of forms. Number one, which is, I guess, preferred, is in person. You're welcome to be here in the town hall auditorium and make your comments in person on the public record. And when that happens, I'll, if you raise your hand, I'll call you up as I see you. Do we have any slips? We do. So there's also paper slips at the front entry. So if you want to write your name down and which application you'd like to comment on, you can do that as well. So I'll ask you to come up. You sit at the table here at one of those two microphones, and please give us your name and address for the record, and then address your comments to the board. And we welcome all those comments. Alternatively, you can comment via telephone. Our phone number here is 585-340-8771. And there's a control center here at the town hall monitoring the phone system, and they will put you in the queue to make your comments via telephone. The third alternative is via the web or electronic transmission. And if you go to pennfield.org, on the front page or the homepage of the website, should be a link to this meeting. And that will then take you to a place, you should be able to see a link where you can, you know, type in a comment and send it over electronically. Okay. With that, Doug, please read our first application.
All right. Application number one, Marathon Engineering, 39 Cascade Drive, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Sahar Elazabi, M.D., requests under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Pennfield for preliminary and final site plan approval for a 4,018-square-foot asphalt pavement expansion throughout the property in several locations with associated site improvements on 0.629 acres located at 1527 Empire Boulevard. The property is now or formerly owned by Creek Ranch LLC and Zoned Limited Business LB, application number 22P-0004, SBL 93 dot 19 dash 1 dash 001.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Cole Pepesergi with Marathon Engineering, here on behalf of Dr. Sahar and Creek Ranch LLC. Today, we are here requesting site plan approval for the previously added impervious pavement onto the property. The property is located about 1,000 feet south of Plink Road on Empire Boulevard. There are two entrances to the site, one on the north property line and one on the south property line. The one on the south property line is the one that's mainly used by the property or the business. There's some parking in the back. There was some limited parking in the back previously. They have added now approximately 4,000 square feet of pavement to add parking areas and widen the existing drive slightly. The, we have now added some stone diaphragm since we've been involved to help treat and capture some of that runoff that was added. And we have sent, or we've received comments from the town and addressed all of those. But ultimately, this one's pretty simple. Let you open it up to any questions.
Okay. Bob, you want to start?
Yeah, a couple of questions. For staff adding the 4,000 square feet of impervious, did that create any issues with drainage that wasn't mitigated or?
Well, no. So our code requires anything that's over 6,000 square feet per the old IWC standards. But we also have water quality section in our design standards. It also takes that 6,000 square feet. We were more worried with this project being so close to the steep slope e-pods that we wanted to try to create some way for the water that's running off the parking lot to enter that stone diaphragm and then kind of level it out and kind of spill out as sheet flow rather than pinpoint discharge. So they've added that to the plans, and staff's fine with what they've provided.
Okay. So that looks, looks good.
Yep.
Okay. And for, for the applicant, the, the purpose of widening that driveway that goes out to Empire, why was that done?
I believe mostly because there was some dirt areas from cars that would pull on incorrectly. So the slightly widening in it would.
Okay.
Prevent that unsightly area of dirt versus, you know, a nice grass area.
Okay. Is there an intention between the curb within the right-of-way to also pave that area? Because right now, it's, it's just dirt.
Right now, on the other side, there's sidewalk. So they can't, they wouldn't be able to.
There is a section, there is a section, though, that I believe is, is dirt in there, too.
In the tree lawn?
Between, between the roadway and the brick or masonry fence line?
There's no intention at this point to do, to add any more, to add any more impervious or add any more.
Okay. Because right now, that will be a mud hole in there.
We can.
Yeah, take, take a look at that because it doesn't, if you continue that line right to Empire, there's no, there's no sidewalk, and it's, there's no paving material in there. So. Okay. That was it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just to, for the record, this has already been put in, correct?
Everything except for the stone diaphragm and associated erosion control measures.
Okay. All right. Was it just an oversight that the applicant didn't realize that they needed?
Not understand that they were over the threshold for the new impervious pavement.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, that, that section that I'm talking about is between the sidewalk and Empire. There's, there's dirt in there.
In, within the right-of-way?
Within the right-of-way. Yeah. So I just.
That require them to get a DOT permit in order to do any of that work.
Okay. So I think, you know, that has to be a solid surface.
That would fall completely under the purview of the New York State DOT, and if they would.
Okay.
Right. So it's something we can suggest, but it's really probably up to the applicant if they want to go through the process of going with the DOT to get a permit to do that minor work.
Yeah. Because if you look at elevation.
Is something that could be grassy, put down there or something?
Yeah.
This what's going to happen, cars pull out, it's going to get a larger and larger. It's going to be, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're happy to work with town staff to.
Okay.
Find a solution.
You had a question?
Yeah. Could you point out, please, where the handicap accessible parking stalls are?
The handicap accessible is in the front currently.
Okay. Because there's.
Where's the front?
So there, there's a.
Turn around.
Yep, handicap right there, right where the cursor's at.
So you're going to need to show on this plan where the accessible space is and where the loading zone is, and where that is striped, and also the signage required for the accessible space.
We can do that. Yep, absolutely.
So you see, you've got this area hatched behind the building, but the accessible space needs to be adjacent to the accessible entrance to the building.
Yes. The, the hatching in the rear is mainly for, to prevent cars from parking in front of that entrance there. And the accessible parking is out in the front, accessible route out front.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board at the moment? All right. I'd. I'd like to open it up to the audience. Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this application? Okay, I don't see anybody here. Let me check to see if anybody's called in or submitted electronic submissions. I see none. Let me just remind people the phone number. It's (585) 340-8771. And if you want to submit electronically, it's penfield.org, and then just click on tonight's, the link to tonight's meeting. Okay. I don't see any other comments. Thank you very much for your presentation, and you'll be hearing from us.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You, too. Okay. Item number two.
All right. Application number two, Passaro Associates, 242 West Main Street, Suite 100, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Eagle Cleaners, requests under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval on the construction of a 5,400-square-foot single-story building for a dry cleaner with associated site improvements on 0.69 acres located at 1698 Penfield Road. The property is now or formerly owned by Ida Schreiner and Zoned Limited Business LB. Application number 22P-0005, SBL 139 dot 05 dash 1 dash 52.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Pat Nupham. I'm with Passaro Associates. We are the civil engineers for the project. As previously mentioned, our offices are 242 West Main Street in Rochester, New York. Also here with me is the applicant, Mike, and I'll let him say his last name because I'll butcher it. So Mike and his wife.
Good evening. I'm Michael Mitchkey, the owner of Eagle Cleaners, and my wife Darlene Mitchkey. We've been, we've had Eagle Cleaners there since 1995 in the plaza, and we're looking forward to moving to 1698 for an expanded operation for more conveniences to our customers and additional training for new employees, which we desperately need.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
So I'll give a little recap of what our plan is, is there's an existing approximately 2,000, 2,000 or 3,000 square foot building there now, and the intent is to remove that and build a completely new building. The reason being is Mike had looked at the existing building to see if it was usable, if it was something that was functional for him, and it was not. So he determined that it was better to really just remove the building and reconstruct a new building. So as you can see on our site plan, our intent is to try to keep as much existing pavement as possible. The location of our new building is really right on top of the existing building location. In addition to some of the improvements we're making to the site, as far as the building goes, we are also going to bring a dedicated sewer down to the site, which currently the site is on septic system. So in addition to all of that, we were before the zoning board last month. We received a variance for a front setback because we don't meet the front setback that was granted, as well as a sign setback for our sign. So both of those variances were granted last month with a really positive recommendation for this project. We've received town comments. We've addressed them. We fully anticipate maybe another round of comments, technical comments from the town, town staff, town engineering staff. But other than that, we are here tonight to hopefully obtain preliminary and final approval, site plan approval, to move forward with the construction of this project.
Thank you for your presentation. Would you like to start off?
Yeah, sure. Thank you so much for your presentation. So you had mentioned you have the current location. Now, that is in Panorama Plaza?
That's correct.
Okay. So, and you're saying that the space that you have right now isn't sufficient for your business moving forward? Are you seeing a big increase in volume?
It's gone busy for us, but the layout is the biggest issue that we have. And if we were to move to a larger facility inside the plaza, I would still be under the same expenses of moving the equipment and setting up.
And there's, where the plaza, where it is in the plaza, what are the stores located on either side of it?
One is Bruegger's Bagel Shop, and the other is Tuesday Morning.
Okay. And there's no room for expanding out that area or anything like that? And you mentioned training, so you have, you're going to be training people or...
Our facility is only 20 feet wide, so the equipment takes up so much space. So with a larger facility, we'd be able to bring in additional pieces of equipment to help train new employees for the future.
Okay. So more potential job opportunities?
More potential jobs, yes.
That's wonderful.
I noticed that, I'm not 100% sure. If you're tearing down the building, why not get rid of some of the existing asphalt? I don't understand the hesitation in turning some of the existing asphalt into planted green space.
So there's, they, as town staff had already mentioned, there are some around the Quake Creek watershed issues or concerns that come up there, where anytime you dig an existing asphalt area or disturb any ground, it's considered disturbance. So our goal is to try to stay away from disturbing as much of what is existing as possible to be able to, and to utilize what's there rather than replacing it or removing it. So that's part of the reason behind it, is to stay away from having to put a stormwater management facility on a six-tenths of an acre site.
So is it in the floodplain?
It's not in a floodplain, no.
500-year?
Nope, it's not, it's not over an acre disturbance. It just happens to be in a Rhone Creek watershed, which has a lot more stringent requirements than, than any property outside of the Rhone Creek watershed. So instead of an acre of disturbance, if you disturb less than a half an acre, and there's certain criteria that you have to meet in order to, to end up with having to do that, and that's why we're trying to stay away from disturbing more than what we need to.
Okay. And the other question I had is about running the utilities. I think you're proposing to dig up Penfield Road.
Not the road. There's a green space between, I don't have the, I don't actually have an aerial photo to show you, but there's a green space between the edge of the road, and there's a sidewalk there that we're proposing to install a sanitary sewer, and that comes from right in front of the plaza.
She's working on it. She's a whiz with this stuff.
Yep. So there's that, but there's also the green space in front of the plaza, which is where the sanitary sewer will be run. So it won't actually be in the roadway.
Okay.
Other than typical water utility connections, there's no other disturbance of the roadway.
Are there any elevations of the building that you can show?
I have somebody.
You didn't see him photobombing the other guy, the other guy's up here, and he's holding the sign up.
I didn't do that on purpose.
No.
I have, I haven't...
Guess I've been asleep at this bridge.
I have an elevation up. I also have one here. I don't know if you guys can see, can you see my computer or no?
Yes, yes, displays down in front of us.
So it's, the reason why it's not really colored is because it's proposed to be a white building with stone, dark stone along the bottom, like a stone veneer.
Okay.
It's a metal building. There's going to be a port-a-share that you can drive under to drop your laundry off, and someone can come out. It's more like a valet-type service. So that's the gist of it. Mike had brought a color sample of the stone that he's looking at using for the bottom.
We're playing darker stone with the white building and the gray roof and trim.
So it'd be like a standing seam roof or shingle or what kind of...
It'd be a metal roof.
Metal roof?
Metal roof, yep.
And the siding, will it, is it, can you kind of describe, will it look...
It's a corrugated metal siding. So it'll, it'll look similar to a metal building.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board at the moment?
Nope.
Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this application? Anybody out of the millions of people watching in cyberspace and on television? Again, phone number (585) 340-8771, or penfield.org, homepage, click on the meeting. All right. I don't have anybody on the phone or sending in electronic copies. Thank you for your presentation. We have a little bit more review. I know you asked for approval tonight. It almost, just the way our process works, it almost never happens the same night. So don't take that as a, hey, what happened? And so we'll table this this evening and probably discuss it a little bit more at the next work session.
Okay. There was no other concerns than what you guys...
I can't totally say that. This venue is for you to present it to us and give an opportunity for public comment, which obviously, I mean, people can still write in, call in, things like that to the Town Hall.
Yeah, no, I was just, I was more referring to the board as well, so, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Application number three.
All right. Application three, DDS Engineering Surveying, LLP, 45 Hendricks Road, West Henrietta, New York, 14586. On behalf of Splash Car Wash, Fairport LLC, requests under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 and Article 13-13.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval and a conditional use permit on building renovations and site improvements of an existing car wash facility under new ownership on .0.96 acres located at 2140 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The property is now or formerly owned by Splash Car Wash, Fairport LLC, and Zoned General Business GB. Application number 22P-0006, SBL 140 dot 01 dash 2 dash 5 point 1.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thanks for the opportunity for us to present our project tonight. My name is Cade Krieger with DDS Engineers. Also with me here tonight is Garrett Steiner, one of the project engineers at DDS, Jeff Lidoux, the architect on the project, and Jeff Arnold and Dave Clements, both part owners of Splash. On behalf of my client, Splash Car Wash, Inc., we're here tonight seeking preliminary and final site plan approval for proposed building renovations and site improvements to an existing car wash facility at 2140 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The project consists mainly of site circulation improvements, new pavement, a car wash tunnel extension, and a full remodel of the existing building and internal wash components. Existing drainage on the site generally flows from west to east. That'd be from Highway 250 into the site and from south to the north, where it historically has meandered its way onto the private road and sort of found its path to low spots to the east on neighboring properties. We're proposing new drainage structures to handle the stormwater in an effort to improve drainage on the site and provide some water quality treatment as well. In addition, the project will involve some new landscape areas and lighting. Primarily, we'll be relocating light poles and installing new LED lights as the town requires with full cutoff as necessary. Ingress to the site will be provided via the existing curb cut onto 250. Egress from the site will be onto the private drive to the north. Our proposed egress there is approximately 65 feet further to the east, which we feel is a big improvement to how the site operates now. It's kind of a, kind of a no man's land of pavement, and cars can come and go kind of wherever they please. So I think this will really clean up that area and sort of better meet the goals of the 250 overlay district. There's also an emergency escape lane proposed to exit on the property to the east, for which we will need an access easement so that we can tie into a proposed access easement that's being granted to the town on that property. That escape lane is kind of a last ditch. If someone needs to get out, they can get out. Most of the time, it'll be coned off. It is not a place where cars can turn off, you know, normally if they want to. One of the staff is going to have to pull the cones and let them out, so it's not going to be a heavily traversed egress from the site. The facility will utilize existing water and sanitary services. We're not proposing any changes to those services. We feel they're adequate for the car wash as it operates now. We will be attending the ZBA meeting this month to ask for an area variance for front setback to allow for a 20-foot extension of the existing building to the west in order to provide the minimum desired tunnel length for the car wash operations that they need. We feel that that encroachment into the front setback is in line with surrounding businesses, as many of the businesses along that stretch are, in fact, closer to the right-of-way than the existing car wash out there. We will also need a New York State DOT highway work permit to do the work outside of our property line in the right-of-way, DOT right-of-way. We're not, hopefully, we're going to avoid changing that curb cut at all. We want to utilize that existing curb cut, but we are changing the alignment of that pavement a little bit. A couple of things. We've presented the project at the PRC meeting once in November and then again yesterday, and got some good feedback from town staff. And there was a few things we discussed that I wanted to bring to the board tonight as well. There isn't any pre-wash going on at these state-of-the-art car washes that Splash is building, meaning there's no one out there standing in the front, hosing off cars where drainage is coming back from the front. They're installing internal high-pressure wash systems that are, you know, they do a better job than any pre-wash is going to do. So that, that's not something we have to worry about necessarily. And then I know sound is going to come up as a question. So the way these vac spaces work, all those internal parking spaces are vacuum spaces. The way those work is there's a, like a 75-horsepower vac motor on, for each row, that have silencers on them. They're extremely quiet compared to conventional vac systems where the sound is coming out of the vac hose itself. With these, the motor itself ramps up as people use it, and it shuts off if there's no one using the facilities. We have sound decibel data that will provide to town staff, and I believe it's in the range of 38 decibels 30 feet out, so it's, it's, it's very minimal. Some of the other items we discussed at the PRC meeting are, they'd like to see us square up that entrance coming in a little bit more with 250, which I agree with. We're going to try to... We're going to try to soften that angle as best we can, hopefully we don't have to lose a vac space, but if we have to, we'll make it work. We did run some turning movements with a large truck and have 450 crew cab, about the biggest truck I could find on there. It had, it really had no problem making that inside turn from 250 on the inside lane into the site. So we'll, we'll provide that to town staff as well. We also talked about the accessible parking spot being a little unclear of where you were to offload or load or offload if needed. We're going to just stripe off that entire spot so that if there's someone with a van that, you know, needs to load or offload, they can park to one side or the other in order to do that because there's ample space, that's a 16-foot wide space, so they should have enough space to do that per the ADA requirements. And then on this plan, you'll see initially we had traffic pattern reversed coming out of the tunnel and that was in an effort to allow cars that are coming out of the wash to get into the vac spots unobstructed. We realized that that's a little confusing and we're, we're rethinking that now. So we're going to put that back to the normal traffic pattern, right, right in, right out, and we'll just put a stop bar on the lane coming out of the vac spots so that the tunnel has the right-of-way coming into the vacuum areas and then anyone leaving has to wait. In addition, there's going to be traffic loops in there, emergency stop loops where if someone at the end of the tunnel has to stop for any reason, the tunnel operation stops. It senses that stops, it won't create a backup of cars. We talked about photometrics for the site, we, we don't have them currently on this, in this set. We'll, we'll be providing those. Like I said, it's going to be relocation of pole bases, but probably proposing new poles. So we'll get those to town staff before the next meeting. And then we, we talked about the tower, which is proposed on the architectural renderings and that there's really no, there's no offices up there or anything, it's not really a practical function. It's more of an architectural character for the building that a lot of their new sites are implementing. And I think most of you should have pictures from some of those sites. Geneva and Newark are good examples of new sites that have towers. That's all I have, so I'll turn it over to the board at this time for any questions.
Okay. Thanks for your presentation. I have a few, a few questions. You finished up with the tower, I guess I'll start with the tower. This, I'm assuming, is this the Geneva location?
Yes, that's correct.
And the, the part of the structure that I guess you, we call the tower in the Penfield proposal is significantly taller than this, right? Or is it the same?
It'll be.
Does it just look different in the rendering?
Yeah, it'll be the same or similar, yeah.
It just looks, they're similar in height between the two. I think part of it is because this one is not as rectangular as that one, so it makes it look.
It looks a lot more massive in that rendering than?
That one's 34 feet.
Yeah, I think Geneva's 35, 34 and a half, so. I believe Geneva's 30, just over, just under 35 feet, so I can verify that.
Okay, so they're essentially, they're essentially the same, within a half a foot or something?
And we surely would have no problem dropping that down, sir.
Okay.
But I think it's showing, I don't know, the elevation, the tower height. But it's, we set the tower height at just under, it was either at the bottom right there, yeah. It's 32 feet.
I'm assuming that's mostly a branding feature.
Yeah, so, yeah, so this one is shorter than the one that you were just showing.
So I stopped by the Geneva location yesterday and I wasn't 100% sure. You know, I came down south on Preemption Road, made a right, an immediate right into the parking lot because I wanted to check it out and all of a sudden I see myself swearing at myself saying, how do I get out of here? I don't, I don't want to get the car washed, I'm sort of stuck, I have no, I'm, I'm trapped. Like you, I pulled in and all of a sudden, I'm like, nowhere to go other than through the pay booths, through the car wash and then get out. Thankfully, there weren't, it wasn't stacked up, it was, you know, the weather wasn't great, so there wasn't a million cars there. There wasn't anybody else there. And so I, I just did a K-turn and went out the entrance. But it struck me that that can happen with people on a fairly regular basis. Even if they, hey, just, I just want to turn around, I made a, a wrong turn, I need to turn around and go back somewhere else and they're going to find themselves. This site plan has the exact same scenario where you pull in and there is no way to get out without paying for and going through the car wash. And that is something that really strongly suggests maybe there's an alternative way to do that. And go ahead and?
Our, our sites are, these washes are staffed fully by world appropriation. You do not have to go through that pay, you, you have to go through the pay station, you don't have to pay. There's an attendant there that's always going to be available to open. They simply would flip a button from inside the office or at the pay booth, our tenants will open the gate to allow you to go through the escape exit and back out and around. It's, it's really just that simple. There's no complication, we don't question customers' wire. We're, we're not trying to sell them if they came in, didn't want to wash. We, the gates, again, the office, the manager who's inside the office can see it, he can open the gate. Any one of the three gates, whichever one you're coming up to, or the tenant right there at the site can walk over to the backside, that gate hits a button, the gate goes up and then there's an entire escape route, there's always an escape lane to get somebody out of there.
So if, in the scenario that it's a busy day and there's cars queued up.
Yep.
Let's say in this, in this facility, you're heading north and I think Burger King's right to the south, correct?
Yep.
So you go past Burger King, jeez, I missed the entrance of Burger King, I really wanted to do that, but this is busy. I make a right turn into this and realize I made a mistake, I can't get into Burger King and now there's, how many cars can stack up there, probably?
Probably 30.
30? So I'm waiting for 30 cars to go through before I can say, hey, I didn't mean to do this, I just wanted a Whopper. And then they let you out the escape hatch?
Correct. If we, if we connected the entry into the vacuum center, which we clearly could, right, right as you come in, 20 feet in, we could connect it. The issue we're going to get into is a problem, what we have is, we'll have 60% of the people using the vacuums will be non-paying customers, we, we provide a very expensive free service, it's, you know, it's probably a $300,000 vacuum center for free, for free to all the car wash customers, it's a service provided. In our Seneca Falls application where we have, it's a free up-for-all, where anybody can come and go without having to wash, I would say probably, and that application is probably 60, 70% of the customers in the vacuums don't wash, don't pay, don't spend a nickel with us. It's, it's a costly thing. If you, if you allow that access to that vacuum center at no charge, you just get, and I want to say taking advantage of it, it's not what I mean, because I'm sure a lot of those people come back at another time and may wash their car or not, so they may be customers. But any customer of ours can come through with unlimited class, even if they want to wash, they can be fed into the vacuum cleaner by vacuum system. But we don't, we don't have the way to control it if we allow an access to point just into the vacuum center from that area. I guess we could double gate it, so when they came in and out of the vacuums, the sensors would go off to open the gates to, to have them go in. That's, as you see Geneva, the gates aren't fully up yet, there's, we just got the site open on Friday afternoon, it's not completely finished yet.
So how many sites do you have that have been in operation with this type of traffic flow? And what, so I don't, I'm telling you my initial reaction as a normal human being.
Right.
Pulling in and then freaking out. I'm not saying that I'm, hey, it's my way or the, I'm open-minded toward this, but I do want to be convinced that it's a sensible alternative and if you have data or something that, hey, you know what, we've been doing it this way for 10 years and, you know, in, in places where they've been in operation on busy roads and so forth, I can count on one hand, or this is the number of times that we've had an issue.
Our Terrytown location, or not Terrytown, our Downstate location washes probably three times as many as a site will ever wash. And they've had this ongoing for many years, this, the same type of setup.
So you go in, there's really no, you know, you have to kind of?
Correct. And I can give you the facts on all the Splash locations, there's, there's in the neighborhood of 40-some Splash locations now. We as Classy Chassis joined the Splash group back at the end of October, so I can't give you the all, the exact data on all the ones that they have in this, in this nature, but this is the way that every site of Splash is designed. And now I Splash, it's pretty much an industry standard now, it's a, it's pretty much the way they're being built throughout the United States. I don't see any other designs really much anymore down south, Texas, Florida, Carolinas. I mean, this is the typical layouts everybody's going with to try to control that vacuum centers as much as anything. And again, if you create escape, which we have a system in Williamsburg, a new site that we built a year ago, it has that access to get through it. And if you went there and you saw that, it would be even more appalling because everybody cuts the corner. They shoot through, mock one right through the whole car wash to get to the next road over because they, they see the way to avoid a traffic light, you know? And that situation is, is not a good situation all either. I mean, I think far, far, far more dangerous than what we have here. And again, once this site's closed, when it goes dark at night, that entire front lane is, is coned off. All the existential lanes are coned off, so nobody can pull into the site.
Okay, so you mentioned that most of the new designs and things for car washes are of this, in this manner?
Most of, express car washes of this nature have kind of all started to gear towards this concept, yes.
How long ago did they start doing that and how has that played out? I mean, I'm wondering, you know, with the vacuum, I get the fact that, hey, I spent $300,000 on these vacuums and I don't need a bunch of freeloaders just coming in and using the vacuum without paying for a car wash. I, I do get that, I'm a capitalist. But couldn't you get a code or something as you go and you pay for the car wash and you say, hey, punch in, you know, 11000 and you can get a free vacuum at the end?
So if you see on, there's what's called the central vac, our unit that, that Cade had talked about, these run on a high horsepower turbine vac, there is Jeff Ledoux who came to the Geneva site today, he's our architect on this project and he's never been to an advanced site like that. I mean, we were standing about 15 feet from the vacuum and was just blown away, there's, it's silent. Where the typical canister vacs where you could put, each canister vac has its own motor that drives it, then they don't, there's no way to silence those, they can't silence them with it. So each time you would fire those loud motors, the noise disturbance would be, again, outweigh that benefit. So we prefer to go with the state-of-the-art VacuTech system with this turbine silenced motor system which drives every single, every single nozzle, so, and again.
So you can't turn them off independently essentially?
Yeah, there's a, there's an in-country sensor that senses when a car enters the vacuum system, turns it on and according to how many nozzles come off, it'll ramp up and down, you know, to save on energy. But again, we could surely put an exit in right off the, right at the entrance would be the way to connect where the, the driveline comes in, is we could add something there and, and the, we would live with it. I mean, it's not, it's not a game enter.
Yeah, I should say we, we also contemplated doing that, but making it not such an obvious travel way, so it would have a mountable curb with maybe a raised section and a hard surface like pavers or stone where you could drive over it, but it's not clearly a.
Come on through.
A lane for, yeah, coming on in, so no arrows, you know, pointing to the vacuums or anything like that.
Okay, all right. Couple of questions about the, the entry, you, you sort of answered them. Is the reason that there's a pole there, is that why it's so far north? Or can the entire entrance be shifted south a little bit?
Yeah, there's, there's a pole there, yep, that we don't want to mess with.
We don't want to have to move the pole.
And also we'd rather not mess with the existing curb cut. I mean, it's just easier from a construction and permitting standpoint to utilize what's there. That's kind of what's driving the entrance point and angle. Otherwise, coming out perpendicular, still avoiding that pole, that's a whole new DOT permit.
Okay, and then you mentioned that you have reconfigured the, when you leave the wash and go over to the, to the vacuums, that you abandon the British and Hong Kong traffic flow to go with the American style?
As of yesterday morning, we abandoned that idea, yes. So the people leaving the tunnel will now come around the outside on the right side and then the people on the inside leaving the vacs, there'll be a stop bar there, so they have to wait, basically.
Okay, so kind of an alternate traffic type thing?
Yep.
Okay. Those are the questions I have at the moment. Who wants to go first? Kelly?
I will. So on this here, there's a mat room, is that something that will be at this location and what, what is it specifically?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe we were able to fit a mat room in here. Our architect wasn't able to do that for us, so. What the mat room is, is it's kind of another new concept to wear it into as many washes as we can possibly, but limited on space here, but it's for a customer to be able to walk in, they drop their mats in a machine and it cleans it, no charge, just cleans all their, their mats, takes about a minute to put four mats through it.
Okay. Do you have, so?
Jeff couldn't do that, huh?
I thought he was a good architect and he couldn't figure a place to put it.
Oh, yeah, the mat room.
With other car washes, they have, you know, members-only things that you stick in your windshield and you go right, zip right on through and don't have to wait in line, is there going to be something similar?
Yeah, we're going to do even better than that, so we, we go to all, LPR's license plate recognitions, so there's no tags anymore, nothing in front of your windshield, just picks up your, your license plate and off you go through.
Oh.
So Geneva has, is the first LPR system that I know of around here.
And what's the monthly cost for that membership?
I think our monthly start at $19.99, $19.95.
Okay, and unlimited, you can go through as many times as you want?
Correct.
Five times a day if you want to?
Yes, and probably one of the lanes, one of the three lanes will be an express lane exclusively for, for members to go right through.
Okay. My last question, I was a bit confused when you were mentioning the cones. What exactly, so you're going to, I'm just envisioning the car wash shutting down for the night and you're just putting construction cones out, is that, is that what it is or can you elaborate a little bit with that?
Yeah, on the escape lane, that would be sort of coned off all the time. The, you know, the smaller cones, you see sometimes at these facilities so that it's not an exit point for people to just get through the site like we were talking about. If they want to use that, they would be at the kiosk, they would notify one of the staff, the staff would let them through, the staff would go over, pull the cones, let them out, put the cones back.
In an ideal world, staff would do that, but I see, you know, people possibly doing that themselves.
They do. Yeah, we have, we, we use blue cones, we don't use orange cones on our sites, they're a blue cone to color match. And we simply. And we simply do the best we can with it, but what happens at the escape line area is just simply if a customer, they, these escape lanes get used if once a day would be a lot. It would be simply somebody come in, let's say a big mutter truck that's eight feet tall in there and our limit is seven foot four. They got through, they ignored the signs at the pay station, got through. Our staff would then explain to them, refund them their money and exit them out the escape lane, so. Or somebody came through, they didn't realize it was a friction-type wash, they wanted touchless, you know, maybe a situation like that, or any other reason to exit them. And as far as at nighttime, we just simply cone off the entrance to the wash to prevent people coming on and driving around. The vacuums, everything, when we shut off and we close, it goes pretty much dark. I mean, there's building safety license and so forth, but the business is shut down, so we prefer not to have customers just driving around inside there. So, we just put typically three cones up at the exit entrance. If they get on to move them, there's plenty of security cameras on these sites, so.
Sure. Sure. And what are the hours of operation?
The hours of operation here, I believe, will be seven. Do you remember what they were, Kate? We were seven to nine.
Seven to nine is what we would propose.
And that's probably the maximum. They typically, we start off at seven, you know, we may look at that, but most of them really are going like eight to seven, eight to eight. But it's really rare that we have many customers come in much after six, seven at night. It's just not cost prohibitive to keep open for one or two cars that might come in from eight to nine or sometimes even seven, eight in the winter time.
Okay.
Yeah. I had, back on the, talking about the tower, is, is that purely, and maybe I missed it, an architectural element or is there any equipment to some distance up?
There's two things we do need height for is the, we can get a little, a better vacuum or dryer system of the cars with a little bit more space above the ceilings. When we get to that like 13, 14-foot clearance, it improves our ability for our dryers to work better. And then on top of that, we, we need it, the majority of the heat that we need in these washes is at the exit and the entrance, but majority at the exit. So, we'll have a minimum of two furnaces up there that'll create the heat that'll go down through the tunnel. And the furnaces actually go up in this tower, they're not visible from the windows, they're below the windows. We use a floor monitor system, so. And again, we could do it, less if it's not, it's more of a feature to try to catch somebody's eye and it looks better than just, to us, just a basic blah type of, we're trying to create a look with a silver aluminum halo up on, on all our sites now.
Okay. So, the, the equipment doesn't utilize all of that space, but consumes some of it?
Yes, sir. And again, we try to stay with, with all our vacuums, we stay away from the, the industry standard is bright red, bright blue, or bright yellow vacuums with all the stanchions. And we've gone to silver to try to tie it into the gray of the buildings and be a more calm look with the stanchions. I think you probably saw how many we had in Geneva yesterday. That building, the way it presented itself, it may not have been ideal to everybody, but we tried to, we've tried to tune all ours down with using the silver, a silver gray color on the stanchions opposed to the bright yellows and blues and reds you see on typical ones.
Okay. Thank you.
One other thing that, while I was out there, I ended up going across the street, sitting in the parking lot of the, whatever building is across Route 20.
The Campbell's?
Yeah.
Restaurant?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, it doesn't matter. But looking north and watching what was happening, somebody pulled in to pick up somebody that was working there and they pulled in the exit and then parked in one of the vacuum spots. I initially thought that they were one of those freeloaders that you want from vacuuming for free, but then I saw a worker come out and get in the car and go. So, we have a relationship in this situation. We have a relationship with the next door neighbor for employee parking forevermore. So, that situation actually has two gates that go on the exit, so to prevent customers from coming in the wrong way. The gate controller sensors are on back order, so the gates weren't on. Otherwise, that customer would not have been able to pull backwards in. They would have had to go to the employee parking area. So, let's say my 15, 16-year-old kid gets a job at the car wash, doesn't have the driver's license, I need to drop them off for work and pick them up from work. Where do I go do that if there's a gate?
Yeah, so...
Can we bring that up on the picture? It shows clearly the employee parking staff here.
Yeah, so you could potentially just pull into one of those spots and drop them off and then back out.
So, the gate that you're talking about, would that be then somewhere on that single drive aisle?
Yeah.
Around the north that heads east?
Yep. It would be prior to the dumpster enclosure, coming straight in, so it'd be somewhere on that single drive aisle.
Okay.
You know, these, these gates have come a long way from the gates that we first started using 10 years ago. They're really pretty, pretty foolproof, especially when the company sends the sensors out in time. But Geneva, you, it would have, there is two, I don't know if you saw it, the exit side, there was, there's two monuments there, they're electron, that hold the gates. The gates just, we've taken them down because of the sensors that one of the components of it never got sent out by the company, they're on back order. But again, in this situation, there's going to be plenty of space to pull in where the employee parking is to pick up.
Do you have any landscaping proposed for say, to the east? Tell us a little bit about, you know, proposed landscaping.
Yeah, so that green space up kind of on the northeast corner, I think we, we definitely should add some there. We're kind of, we're trying to earmark an area for a bio-retention facility, which we're working on with town staff. I haven't nailed down that location quite yet. It's probably going to be to the north of the building there, in between the building and the exit lane out. There's a big utility pole there with transformers on it that we need to avoid. So, that's, that's really the only area where we can fit green infrastructure. So, once I develop that a little further, we'll add plantings in for that and I'll, I'll make sure we beef up the plantings on that northeast corner. And then I know there was a note in the PRC comments as well, that that grass strip between the vac parking field and the entrance aisle, we call that out as landscaped. We're just not showing any shrub blocks there. We'll get those in there and make sure we clarify that.
Okay. But there's no screening to the east at all proposed?
Yeah, I mean, we have pavement right up to the line pretty much there in order to make the operations work. We could potentially do like a decorative wall or decorative fence or something like that, but even that, I think, is going to be tight.
Okay.
And there, I know there's a, between that and the property to the east there, there's a access road that's recently been built. So, maybe there's an opportunity to do something mutually in that area between the property line and the access road, because it's really not going to be used for much else.
Okay. Jim, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I actually have a question for Mike. Is this give us an opportunity to get a maintenance agreement in place for the service road to the north of this property that's been perpetually full of potholes?
Yeah, we're, well, I don't know if this site will be able to, but we've gotten, I think the next future application, we'd be able to do that, because currently, I believe the town plows that access road and their current owner is sort of responsible for the maintenance of it, but obviously, they haven't been too quick on providing that maintenance. So, I think that in the future, we'll be able to do something with that. But unfortunately, with this applicant, it's different property, so.
Yeah. I posed this question a couple of years ago and they seem to do a pretty good job in the immediate vicinity of the bank and the back outlet to McDonald's, but the rest of that road is just, it's, it's a mess. And, you know, with what they're doing here in particular, with this new service road and this large exit to the north, more people are going to be inclined to pull out and perhaps...
Take a right.
Take a right so that they can shoot to Eastern Penfield.
Right.
And, you know, my, my understanding was that the owners of all of that property and that's, that service access roadway kind of got in before the town initiated that requirement for a maintenance agreement and, and the town was somewhat powerless to...
Right.
To do anything. So, you know, I, to me, that's an important element for this application and the other applications that I know are coming down the road.
Right. And that's probably going to be when our opportunity to get that property maintenance agreement with that.
So, you have, when you have tenants like this, you know, they can perhaps bring some pressure to bear on the property owner.
Yeah. We'll require them to provide a property maintenance agreement as well, so I, I'm not sure if there's one on there existing, but since it's new ownership, we'll probably have to ask for one. We'll have to investigate that.
Yeah, okay.
What is the green space percentage?
It's about 64% impervious right now, so it's right under the threshold of what's allowed.
Okay.
So, I also wanted to ask you if you were prepared to provide a written response to the Penfield Review Committee's comments that were sent out last week?
Yes, yep. We will get those to you next Friday, I believe, is the deadline prior to the, the following workshop and meeting. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the board at the moment? Okay, I'd like to open it up for anyone in the audience that would care to comment on this application. We also, as a reminder to all of those watching from home, 585-340-8771 or penfield.org and you can click on the, the link to this meeting and send your comments in electronically. I do not see anybody here in the audience that'd like to comment or on the phone or electronically. So, thank you for your presentation. We will be sending out a tabling resolution with comments and probably asking for some additional info.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Application number four, BME Associates, Town Lift Bridge Lane East, Fairport, New York, 14450. On behalf of Louis Ribeiro, request under chapter 250, article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval for proposed mixed-use building on Lot 3 of the Penfield Square Development. The proposed building will include a mix of eight residential apartment units and 5,680 square feet of commercial tenant space and associated site improvements on .40 acres located at 300 YMCA Way. The property is now or formerly owned by Penfield Square III LLC and Zoned Mixed Use Development, MUD. Application number 22P-0007, SBL 125.01-1-25.33.
Mike, it's all you.
Evening. Hopefully, last but not least, I'm Mike Bogacevsky with BME Associates on behalf of applicant Louis Ribeiro. And then also with me is Eric Reynolds from SWBR, the architects. Hopefully, I got my laptop plugged in here so you can see my screen.
We'll have to talk to Pete Vars about getting you a new one.
No, they just got me this one. It worked earlier.
I'll tell you, Boggs.
I can hand off controls if it's easiest.
We can be a little patient.
All right.
I do want to hear, I mean, this, this is important to us to give you guys the ability to run your own presentation, get your own flow going and, not that Catherine doesn't do a great job, but...
Yeah, I was excited to try it. I do have one question, though. Since it's two applications for Lot 3 and Lot 4, do you want me to kind of cover them simultaneously or do you want me to keep it separate, Lot 3 and then go through Lot 4?
I would prefer they go together. Did you read both or did you read...
I did not read both legal.
Okay, why don't you, while Brian's working on getting that together...
You okay with that, Peter?
I don't see an issue with that, but I'm not a lawyer, so.
I think it's okay. I mean, they're, they're, it's both the same, isn't it the same applicant for both?
Same applicant, yes. I think we can discuss them simultaneously. I understand that there's two separate applications.
Okay, so why don't you read the, the announcement for the other one and...
All right. So, in addition to application four, application five, BME Associates, Town Lift Bridge Lane East, Fairport, New York, 14450. On behalf of Louis Ribeiro, request under chapter 250, article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval for proposed mixed-use building on Lot 4 of the Penfield Square Development. The proposed building will include a mix of six residential apartment units and 4,740 square feet of commercial tenant space and associated site improvements on .34 acres located at 100 YMCA Way. The property is now or formerly owned by Penfield Square IV LLC and Zoned Mixed Use Development, MUD. Application number 22P-0008, SBL 125.01-1-25.34.
Off you go.
Excellent. Doug did a very good job. So, we're here tonight to request site plan approval for both of these lots, Lot 3 and Lot 4. They were created with the overall Penfield Square Development has two out parcel lots to be developed later on. Both buildings are similar, that they're both proposing first floor commercial tenant space with second and third floors of residential apartments. We did reach out to the town previously to get a determination from Town Building Department and Code Enforcement Officer and Town Attorney that when figuring out the density for this development, that each of these lots would be considered individual when considering be considered individual when considering the residential density along with the commercial space. So Lot 3 itself is the, I'm going to call it the westernmost lot. If you're looking, if you're standing at 250, it's, we've been calling it the rear building. And that's that, this building, the more square building central to the Penn Field Square Development. Like I mentioned, it's three stories and Doug did mention the 4,400 plus or minus commercial space on the first floor with eight apartment units on the second and third floor, which is be a mixture of one bedroom and two bedroom units. The building themselves has been designed to integrate with the, with the overall site plan. Like I had mentioned, a lot of the infrastructure was previously put in with the overall Penn Field Square Development. There isn't a whole lot of site plan improvements that would need to be constructed around this building, just mainly the building itself along with some, some foundation plantings and the sidewalk connections. Similarly, Lot 4, which is the one closer to the YMCA Way entrance up to 250, basically at the corner of 250 and YMCA Way there. Similarly, first floor commercial with second and third story apartment units. Lot 4 would have a total of six apartment units. And hopefully Eric, when he talks about the building architecture, can explain how the buildings work internally with the commercial space and the apartment units also. The, and like I said, similarly with Lot 3, Lot 4, not much site plan improvements. A lot of it was previously constructed with the overall Penn Field Square Development. The utilities basically are connections to existing mains that have been previously installed. Parking has been previously constructed. There are currently 220 spaces throughout the overall Penn Field Square Development with shared parking agreements between all of the lots. And we did outline on the site plans, the required and provided parking calcs for these two buildings. Lot 3 and Lot 4 both have some parking spaces that fall on the lot itself, but like I said, the parking basically is an overall shared parking throughout the entire development. If you look at the breakdown between the existing buildings and the new proposed apart residential apartments, that totals, where did it go here? I think approximately 140 spaces would be required between the existing Penn Field Square buildings plus the new, the new residential apartments. That leaves 79 spaces for the commercial uses for basically an extra parking beyond that. We are eliminating one spot because we're adding in new accessible space at Lot 4. So one spot gets stripped. So the overall 220 spaces that are existing drops down to 219. So you end up with the 79 spaces Since there is some commercial tenant space available on the first floors, there will be some future signage, but that will be a separate sign application. They'll be submitted later once there, once tenants are identified. Tenants, I don't believe are identified currently. Louis is basically wanting to build the commercial space to make it available for, for future We did provide the building architecture. I think Eric can kind of go through a little bit of the, the building architecture and then, then we can open it up for any, any questions and further discussion.
Okay.
Thanks. One thing, just to be clear, I don't think you mentioned it, Mike. The one site improvement that is at parcel three, the rear building there, is we are doing a continuation of the pedestrian spine. There is sort of a dedicated section that's quote-unquote "public," but directly in front of our building, we're doing a continuation of what's already there. So I just wanted to mention that. That was included in the site plans. But that's really the only major site improvement that's happening is just continuing that pedestrian spine in front of Lot 3. So as far as the architecture is concerned, as Mike said, it's three stories. I think most of the folks here, well, at least I remember doing the original Penn Field Square application. This rear building is very similar to the architecture that we presented a couple of years ago for that. But generally speaking, we're trying to fit in with the mixed-use development guidelines. So you'll see that the ground floor elevation has a lot of pedestrian scale elements, large glass windows, things like canopies and awnings that would signify a mixed-use building. And then the upper floors are sort of traditional apartment style. So there's balconies, windows, and both of the main elements on the front piece are capped off with cornice elements to continue sort of the look from the other Penn Field Square buildings. As far as the materiality goes, the main piece on the corner is a composite wood siding. It's the same siding that is being used at the bridge of Penn Field Square that connects the two buildings. So it's a light colored wood. The other materials are a brick veneer at the ground floor to ground the building. Again, more use, more in line with the mixed use. That'll be complementary to the colors that are already there. And then the upper residential floors above the brick veneer are again two more complementary colors and materials from the rest of the project. So there's horizontal white siding and gray panel siding. Other than that, I think the, if we move over to the front building, this one has changed a little bit more from the original application a couple of years ago. But we're trying to keep in, in mind what we had shown at that point and work with, work within that kit of parts, so to speak. So again, same types of things. The ground floor, trying to stick with a mixed-use look. So there's sort of a layered section there. Large storefront glazing for the commercial uses, pedestrian scale elements, again, sconces, lighting, canopies, things of that nature. And then the upper floors, again, balconies and residential style windows. As far as the materials go for this building, we have a manufactured stone veneer, which would be in the same, which would be the same manufactured stone veneer that's on the Penn Field Square buildings. And then we would be proposing two different types of siding, a vertical board and baton style siding and horizontal siding. And then this building here, just given its scale, has a pitch roof on it. Again, keeping in mind with the original sort of proposal and then some timber elements that frame the roof elements at the top as well as the balcony elements. If, just talk for a quick second on the way the buildings function. There is small sections on the ground floor that are residential lobbies. So you come in at the ground floor, there's a small section there with vertical circulation to get up to the apartments. The rear building has what I would call corridor style apartments. So there's eight corridor style apartments. And the front building has townhouse style apartments. So you go up, your living space is on one floor and the sleeping space is on the other floor. So in the rear building, eight apartment style units. In the front building, we have six townhouse style units. That's why you don't see the exact same language carried from second floor to third floor. Overall, like I said, we're trying to keep within the mixed-use development guidelines, provide elements to the building architecture that are in line with that. And you'd expect to see for a building with ground floor commercial space and upper floor residential space. Other than that, is there any questions from the board?
So let's talk for a minute about the overall Penn Field Square success to date. What's the absorption rate on the dwelling units?
That is a great question. I work with home leasing all the time and every one of their apartments sells out or every one of their projects sells out. They've a great provider. I don't know anything else other than that. I don't know for sure on that. And then the assisted living building, I imagine, is also doing very well, but that's sort of a different, that's, you're not like renting that out. It's not a sort of a, it's a little bit different of a model there, but I imagine that that is also doing well.
What about the commercial space? How are you doing with leasing the commercial space?
I don't know that there's any true commercial space that's for rent that already, that wasn't part of the original project.
Non-residential space?
Yeah. So the, most of the non-residential space in that project was part of the assisted living building and it's that ground floor along the pedestrian spine. There's dining rooms and bistros that are along there and as far as I know, they're functioning and-
Do you have any prospective tenants for the commercial spaces that you're proposing here?
I'll turn it over to Louis when I think-
We do not. No, not at this time. So we haven't really started to market it yet until we had our approvals. So once we have the approvals, then we'll start the marketing process.
Please.
Oh, sorry. So until we get our approval, we haven't done any marketing studies or put it out to market yet.
Okay.
So no, no perspectives right now.
Have you done a study of-
Can I interject here?
Sure, go ahead.
What types of commercial establishments will you be targeting?
So would like-
Do you have an idea of what you want to see in there?
Yeah. So no, I mean, I don't think we'll have full-service restaurants, nothing along those lines. Potentially a cafe, something like that, something that would cater to the tenants as well as the home leasing project. It could be medical, something that relates to the YMCA, physical therapists, doctors, something like that. But no set preference at this point.
Okay. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay. Have you done a study to check these two applications against the consistency with the application that we base the overall Penn Field Square approval resolution on? And the other part of that is, have you taken the time to go through the approval resolution to see whether or not these two projects as part of the overall mixed-use development are consistent with the conditions of approval in the approval resolution?
I know they're consistent with what was originally proposed on the overall Penn Field Square plans. The original Penn Field Square plans did show the two out parcel buildings didn't have the residential uses on the second and third floor. That wasn't originally proposed, which is why we had reached out to the town to get the determination on how to handle the density of the overall Penn Field Square development versus the residential density on each of these two lots. And that was in addition to the original Penn Field Square approvals. I know we looked at it, but I don't know if there's anything specific that's different from the original Penn Field Square approval conditions.
So I think it's, I think it's worth doing that study and presenting that to the town.
Sure.
Because that's one of the things that we're charged with is not just looking at these two applications, but the big picture and seeing whether or not anything that you're proposing deviates from what was presented.
Yep.
And/or what the conditions for approval were.
Yeah, we, I mean, as part of our, I'm going to say our responses to, I know we've received PRC comments so far. We're here tonight to get any comments from the planning board. So that way we can provide responses to all those. One of those responses we could provide is some additional input on how these two, two lots compare to the original Penn Field Square approval conditions. The intent is to remain consistent with what was originally proposed. Like I said, with the addition of the-
That's good. That's our intent too.
Yep.
So another question for the developer. What kind of housing are you proposing here?
It's going to be luxury market rate apartments.
Luxury market rate.
Absolutely.
Okay. What are we doing with, with waste hauling and waste disposal in these two buildings?
That's something I think that as we are finalizing the, the site plans and architectural plans, that we'll look to confirm. Currently, I think it's going to be internal trash bins for Lot 4 and possibly a trash bin corral somewhere around Lot 3 building that could store some of the, the trash bins. That's the intent, but I know that we're going to, that was one of the PRC comments that we received that we'd like to, to look at confirming and then provide.
So you're talking about wheeled totes? Is that what you're thinking?
Wheeled totes, yep.
Yeah. So specifically for the apartments. So like Mike said, the parcel three, the rear building, there's an area for a trash corral there, sort of in the backside of the site. That's a no-brainer. The front building will have internal total storage for the apartments. And we don't anticipate like huge needs for eight units and six units. So we don't see an issue with that. On the commercial side of things, we're in negotiations with home leasing to get a spot on, in their parking lot for a dumpster should that need arise. It sort of depends on the uses of the commercial renters, but that's the other half of the trash conversation.
So we're, we're concerned also about where those totes go on the day that the waste hauler comes to pick them up. So if you, if you look at the mixed-use development manual, they're supposed to be to the side or the rear of the buildings. But if you drive by on the day that the trash is picked up for the front building, all those totes are out in front and it's not a very good site. It's not very reflective of-
Understood.
-what the, what the town was looking for. So you know, we like to see something in some revised documentation that would specify, you know, where the trash is, is collected and how it's disposed of.
Yep. Understood. And, and like I said, I think that's something we'd like to confirm with the team here when we were going through, as we respond to the, the PRC comments. And I figured it would come up in discussion tonight. So that's something we'd like to look at, making sure that we can provide a spot that's, that's, I'll call it not front and center.
Okay. And what about lighting for these two buildings?
They're, so basically there are some existing light poles that were installed for the parking areas that were, for the parking spaces that are adjacent to both those buildings. A couple of them will require to be relocated based, just based on these new building footprints, which will provide parking area lighting. And then the building lighting is just like security building lighting and entrance lighting underneath the canopies and the doorways.
So what about some safety illumination for the occupants of the building that could be working nights and coming at all different kinds of hours?
Yeah, I think that's sort of what Mike's describing is there's, there's lights at all the doorways basically, but they would just be small accent lights. Not, you know, we're not trying to light any sidewalks or parking lots with any of those lights. They're not big wall packs, but these are, you know, at every door, you'd, you'd have a sort of a light fixture, either a sconce fixture on the pedestrian spine side or you'd have sort of a overhead fixture in a canopy.
So illumination of the sidewalks is a requirement of the mixed-use development manual?
Right. So I think, sorry, to clarify, our, we aren't, there's no sidewalks really like on our site that are already lit by existing lighting. So the lighting that I'm talking about is just accent lighting that would be directly mounted to the building, illuminating the sidewalk directly at a door. The pedestrian spine and the sidewalks that are around Penn Field Square are already lit by the lights that Mike was talking about.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. What's the height of the first floor?
12 foot eight is the floor, floor. So we have a higher floor for the commercial uses.
You say 12 foot eight?
I think that's right. You might have them on the elevations there.
Okay.
Let's have the total height.
Where, where will residents be encouraged to park?
Can I turn that over to you, Louis?
Yeah, so, I mean, initially, the site itself, so each one of the two sites has its own parking spots. So, my thought would be to have maybe, so in the front building, I think there's 14 spots, maybe. So, maybe we would dedicate six spots to the residents. The additional six...
Eight spots for commercial.
Yeah, exactly. And then, the rest is all shared parking. So, if there was two people living in one apartment, they would have one spot up front. The second spot would be, you know, a shared parking. Wherever they, I mean, it could be in the back, it could be off to the side, I mean, wherever they, they choose to park.
Okay. So, you're thinking about parking for commercial tenants and customers and that sort of thing?
Right.
So, that, you know, even though it's all shared parking, people do want it, especially, well, if you're a resident, you want it convenient, and also, if you're a customer, you want it convenient. So, all right.
Yeah, the idea is, some of those would probably overlap, too, right? So, somebody leaves for work at 7:00 AM, we're not anticipating any business that would open up before seven.
Right.
You know, if it's, if it's doctors or...
Just a point of clarification, we did grant them approval to modify the site plans to add some additional parking after we approved the overall project. So...
So, they could be added. Where, do you know where people are parking now, on the site, typically? What, what spots are used the most?
Just from general observations, from, from doing the, the plans, I believe a lot of the tenants park on the north side of the, the Penn Field Square, I'm, aisle building. That's where, seems to be, be a lot of the, the parking is currently, just from general visiting the site. Which does leave, I was gonna mention, that does leave a lot of the parking around that center green area available. That is adjacent to both these buildings. So, there are the parallel spots along that entrance, eastern entrance around that, that center green area that's adjacent to Lot 4. And then, there is the parking area that, like Jim mentioned, that we modified, on the west side of that center green area, that added some parking, additional spots from what was originally proposed, that faces the pedestrian spine, faces the commercial use along that, that Lot 3 building, too, so...
Okay. And then, architecturally, you know, I think we're gonna need to have Chris Lopez comment on this, as we are having him comment on every application in the mixed-use district. Me not being an architect, but the, that vertical board and batten on Building 4, or the Site 4, seems, you know, would you consider stone or something to kind of break it up and make it look a little, I don't know, more elegant, I guess?
So, what we were trying to do is, areas basically that are commercial have the stone and/or masonry on both the front and rear building. So, if you look at these elevations here, that center section that you actually see with the doorway and canopy, that's actually the residential entry there, and then the, the two pieces with the signage are to the right. So, I mean, we could look at something like that, but just to give you a little bit more of the design logic, that's where that was coming from. So, that centerpiece there is all residential, and then the two sides flanking it have the stone where the commercial uses are. So, just, again, open to, I think, open to the idea, but that was the design logic.
Okay. All right. Any...
Yeah, I have a, a couple of questions. Do you have any, back to the parking, do you have any electric car charging stations?
None are currently proposed. That's not to say that as Louis gets the sites developed, that they couldn't be installed, or that, I mean, I don't think there's anything stopping the existing Penn Field Square.
I think there are some.
Is there?
I think, I, I'm pretty sure that with the parking lot that you mentioned, Jim, that that section that we added, there are four electric charging stations, which would be just east of parcel 3. I want to say that that's where they're installed, but looking at it.
You know, this is gonna become more and more of an issue, as you guys know.
True.
So, at least if you rough in the feed, even if you don't put the charging stations in, we have projects all over the country. You can't buy these charging stations. They're, they're just not available. But at least if you, if you come back and tell the board that you're gonna rough them in, then you can accommodate the future installation.
Yeah, without digging everything back up.
It's a good, it's a good thought, yeah.
Good thought, yeah.
And then, just in terms of a traffic perspective, so, you have the YMCA, the current Penn Field Square, these two proposed new buildings, an application for the other side of the street, one exit and one entrance for everything. So, do you anticipate, how is traffic flow now with the YMCA with...
So, I mean, the overall site layout for the, I'm gonna say, the overall Penn Field Square development anticipated these buildings to be constructed. So, you do have the shared YMCA way, which is the main thoroughfare between the YMCA and the Penn Field Square development. But, both buildings have, I'm gonna, multiple entrances into them. If you look at the overall site plan, the Lot 4, closest to 250, primarily will use this eastern entrance, I'm gonna call it that, that, for that center green area, but that's not stopping anybody from pulling in the western entrance and looping around. There is two-way traffic around the north side of the aisle building, the aisle building, and, so there is a good circulation of traffic. It's not just a one-way entrance into each building, or out of each building area, so that way, generally, traffic can flow basically around the site.
So, actually, somebody, one of the town staff members brought this up, with respect to maintaining the flow for the current residents and...
During, during construction.
But, there's actually a provision in the fire code that requires you to maintain emergency access and pedestrian access, and the means of egress throughout all the existing buildings during construction. So, you're gonna need to prepare a safety plan that shows your staging areas and your storage areas, and your trailers, and your portable toilet facilities and everything, and that, that's gonna be a condition.
Yes, of course. The, we did read the comment, and the PRC comment that we received, and I think that's something that we can respond to and address with, either with planner visions or in writing, or also, at the time of the pre-construction meeting between contractors and town staff, to review those, the sequence of construction steps that are outlined on our site plans, that will, that can identify the, like you said, the staging areas and construction entrances, and the fact that the entrances do need to be maintained open for, for access for the, the...
Just for, for, for point of contention, they need to be documented on a plan ahead of time.
Understood.
But, the other obvious thing, I think this is where you were going, is you don't plan on building both of these at the same time, right?
Maybe not simultaneously at the same time, but yes. I mean, the, the thought is not to build one, finish it, and then start the other one.
Okay, so, your safety during construction plan needs to encompass all of those areas.
Sure.
Bob? Just a few comments. It might have been covered in the PRC, I'm not sure. Just on the different pages, the accessible spaces, I think I figured out, but it looks like they didn't carry through to all of the different pages on the site plan. And, the, the buildings, are both buildings gonna have full-service elevators?
Just the rear building. So, the rear building with corridor style has an elevator that goes to first, second, third floor. The front building with townhouse-style units does not have an elevator.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this application? Okay. Let me see if we have any calls. We have no calls and no electronic submissions. Let me remind the folks at home, it's 585-340-8771, or pennfield.org, and you can submit a comment electronically. There should be a link to this meeting on the homepage of the website. No other comments from the board? Do you have any closing comments?
No closing comments. We appreciate the input from the board. We'll work on addressing some of the board comments, along with the PRC comments. We'll look to town staff for the, the architectural review from Chris Lopez. I know that's one of the things that you had mentioned, AJ. So, we'll look to follow up on that, and then, work towards getting some responses before, before the next, the next meeting.
Sounds great. Okay. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. So, for us to finish up here, do we want to go through some of the items that we want to incorporate in a tabling resolution? Now, we want to sit on this, absorb it, and gather our, our wits for our work session on the 24th?
I can't, I, I can't fashion a list of items for a tabling resolution, because I really didn't get a chance to look at this until late this afternoon.
Yeah. So...
So...
Do we need to, after a public hearing, we probably, we need to table, but we, what I'd like to do is, is table pending further input on a...
Sure.
I guess a more involved...
Table for, you know, pending consideration of a more formal tabling resolution, or lack of a better...
Right.
Well, it's just, it's, it's to, to afford the board a greater opportunity to review the information.
Yeah. Okay. Why don't we start with the first one? That was...
1527 Empire Boulevard?
Yes. So, that's Bob's. And with that, just quickly, is engineering and staff comfortable with where they're going and what they've submitted?
Yeah. I mean, we were really wanting that, since they already added the pavement, we had concerns with that steep slope, and so they, Mark Malentine wanted, he requested that stone diaphragm to be installed at the end of the parking lot. So, since they are amenable to doing that, then we're, we're protecting the steep slope, and we have a little ease of the water that's gonna run off there, so...
Okay. So, with that, is there any other major concerns from staff? I know that you have the concern about the...
Driveway.
Dirty area.
Well, the driveway. So, basically, the old driveway went straight out. It's paved, including past the sidewalk to Empire. If you're on the site, to the left, they probably added, I don't know, two and a half, three feet of asphalt. The asphalt goes up to the sidewalk, which is, of course, within the right-of-way. But on the other side of the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and Empire, it's mud, it's dirt. So, you've got almost a three-foot...
You mean, from the property line to where they put in the asphalt? Or...
From...
Toward the interior of the site to the sidewalk?
If you draw straight lines out from where the asphalt is now for the driveway, on the left-hand side, between the sidewalk and Empire, it's just dirt. And it's, I don't know, it's probably a foot 18 inches, I'm guessing?
Yeah. I mean, I made that comment, and you provided new asphalt on the backside of the sidewalk. What have you done on the interior? Because I wanted to know if they needed to get a DOT permit. Nobody wants to ever get a DOT permit, because that's a six-month process.
So, they basically widened, if you want to call it, well, I guess it is a curb cut. Their existing, they widened it by roughly three, two and a half, three feet.
So, do we, what's the board's thoughts on, do we ask them to remove that and put it to the existing edge of the site driveway?
What do they really gain by adding this two and a half feet of pavement?
They said, well, when I asked them, they said people were going off the edge and going into the mud on their site with, you know, on their side of the right-of-way.
So, this was, I mean, years ago, this was previously a residence. These residences, many of them are converted, converted for commercial uses. So, prior to it being Dr. Sahar's facility, medical facility, it was, I believe it was a rug and floor care.
No, this was, that was to the north.
That was to the north.
I was, yeah, wrong.
So, many of these sort of still have residential curb cuts.
Right.
So, it was likely never widened to meet a commercial curb cut standard.
So, if we're looking at that plan there, Catherine, if you could zoom in a little bit on the entrance, yeah, great. So, the area of asphalt added since last survey, that's the area that they've added, right?
Yes.
And, Bob, you're talking about where you're concerned is the, if up is north and down is south, and the sidewalk is the dashed line, or no?
The sidewalk's not shown.
Yeah, the sidewalk is basically the back, or it's in front of that dark black property line.
In front of, when you say in front of, are you talking about to the right of it, to the east of it? Or are you talking about to the...
Yeah, it's like where the 81.70, that's where the sidewalk is. Catherine's pulling up a site for an aerial.
And the sidewalks were installed in the right-of-way, as opposed to on the property.
So, why, why is this a big hardship for them to get a DOT permit? They've already done the work, they're already occupying the property, they're already occupying the business. It's, it's not gonna slow them down.
No.
Why, why, yeah, it's like, why wouldn't you condition to get a commercial wide with, you know, curb cut?
Right.
I mean, that's a DOT, they need to chime in on what they feel is appropriate, so...
It's their show.
I don't know. That was just, you know, my observation.
Well, right. I, I agree with your observation.
Well, it makes sense. If somebody cuts that corner, just like you said.
It's gonna be a big pothole.
Yep. Yep, and it's a hazard. So, I mean, we're not holding them up, right? We could, we could make this a condition of approval.
For them to get a DOT permit to fill...
Well, for them to make the, whatever they gotta do to make the improvements that we think are necessary.
I don't know if we have right of justification over a DOT right-of-way. That's something that's...
Except if they're widening that, then, if they want to widen it, if they don't get that revised curb cut, then they would have to take that out. get that revised curb cut, then they would have to take that out.
The existing added asphalt?
Right, right.
Well, to me, it doesn't make any sense to have that asphalt at the moment, because you get, you get into the site, and who's going to use that unless they need to get around somebody coming out at the same time?
They had two ton of asphalt left over when they were there.
Yeah.
So they need to come back with a, with a revised site plan anyhow, because they need to show the handicap accessible parking and loading zone in that location and the signage. Is the signage there, Bob?
No, no.
Okay.
So all that needs to be added to the, to the plan, and those improvements need to be made anyhow.
I mean, we can make the, I think we can make the recommendation that they strongly, you know, take a look at their entrance to the property and obtain whatever necessary permits from the DOT to make it a safe.
A full width widening of the entrance. I agree, Bob.
Yeah, okay. Let's at least put that in our tabling resolution so that they know. Anything, that's about it with this, right?
Yeah.
You want to make the motion?
Motion to prepare the tabling resolution as we described.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All right. She's getting. Hetske, aye.
Aiken? Aiken, aye. Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
You're starting to get used to like getting your name in the minutes. Yeah. Okay, second one. The dry cleaners. We want to discuss that further at, when we're fresh at the work session?
Yeah, I think so.
I would tend to agree with that.
There's a number of things going on here that need to be further absorbed.
Agreed, I agree. So would you like to?
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
I'll make the motion to table for further discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded.
Hetske?
Aye.
Aiken? Aiken, aye. Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Item three, the car wash, same deal. I will, I guess this is my application, so I'll move to table pending further discussion and preparation of comments.
Yeah, well, as long as we're on the topic, not that we need to add it to the tabling resolution, but I'd, I'd be very interested in seeing what you could do with, with the maintenance of that service road.
That's actually something that I, we definitely want to put into the tabling resolution. And if we don't start now, the last person that goes in that is going to get stuck with a lot of.
Well, you know, I don't know what authority we have to regulate.
The property with the maintenance road, though, is not.
Is not before us.
So.
Right.
So we need to find a way to create some wording that, that makes this an issue, whether, whether we can compel this applicant to, I mean, they're not going to enter into a maintenance agreement with the town for property they don't own, but somehow or other, we got to find a way to try to advance this because that really is a mess.
It is a mess, and we need to, we can't just, to me, we're kicking the can down the road. We're, somehow, we got to come up with a solution. We can't all just say, oh, jeez, well, we don't have any control over the property, but we let everybody use it.
Does the town already have an easement over it, you said, Mike?
I don't, I don't know if we have an eas, well, we might have an easement over it, but I don't know what the easement actually says. So there's been a lot of communication between the DPW director on, because for some reason we plow this road, but we don't necessarily have to maintain it. So.
The history of this road is a little convoluted.
Right. So unfortunately, I think because the part that we're concerned about is on another property, once that property comes in for site plan approval, then that's when we can get the property maintenance agreement. So then at least all the parcels that are adjacent to that road, or abutting that road, or encompass that road, will have some legal aspect of being able to force them to maintain their portion of it.
So here's what I say.
Don't we have?
Let me just finish this thought. Allowing somebody to approvals to create a service entrance exit onto a service road that's not suitable for motor vehicle traffic would violate about five ash tow requirements on its own. I mean.
But this car wash doesn't, well, I guess I haven't been driving down where the old cobblestone or whatever it was, restaurant, cornerstone or whatever, that, how that road is. But I know it gets pretty bad in the back.
It's pretty bad in the front now.
Yeah, but.
So bad that if you drove down there, you'd have to cut across the parking lot of the old restaurant to try to, to get out of there without sacrificing your car.
Yeah, I think we only have an access easement. I don't think we have anything else. And somewhere, when that road was in, you know, inception of that road, somehow we got into plowing it for some reason, and nobody knows why.
So the, the access road between the former cornerstone property and the car wash property, there's some potential, because they do own like half of it or something on that north side.
Well, not, not based on their site.
Not based on their site plan?
No, basically ends right at the edge of their green grass there. So most of that is on the cornerstone property where.
They do show, it looks like it's.
So.
So we need to look back at the Luamp.
Right.
And find out what exactly was set out for that.
And, and how that easement is worded maybe.
Yeah.
Right.
And so if I'm the person who owns that, why would I spend my money maintaining it for other people? I don't care.
Well, right, so. So unfortunately, whenever that site plan came in, the mentality of the town at that time was for A, right? So now we've learned from that, that site plan that A doesn't work, we need to come up with Plan B. And so when, unfortunately, we need to have that property come in for a review of something.
Well, Catherine, pull that boundary back up. You just hit. Giddy up.
Yeah, according to, it looks like according to their survey map, they do own a portion of that road, and they certainly we could.
Go by that.
See what we could do along that.
This is GIS mapping?
Huh?
This is from pictometry?
Yes.
They're pretty accurate.
But then, if we go to their site plan, they're.
I think their site plan indicates that they, it shows partial ownership of that entry road. But they only have partial ownership of the entry road. They don't have any access to the road to the rear of them. And as they said, they, at this point, they don't even have an access easement to it to show their, I mean, they show their emergency exit bailout. But they don't have an easement to allow that bailout at this point.
You're right, they own a portion of it.
They show that bailout based on a future access easement with the.
Well, I think it's, I think it's to the benefit of the community to see if we can't push that. I think this is our opportunity.
I just don't know how.
You guys will figure it out, Mike.
Yeah. You guys are all professionals.
I guess we'll figure it out.
We do have to come up with a solution for this.
I agree.
There's, there's, I mean, it looks to me like the old restaurant is one parcel, and then does Jim Trow still own that other part?
I think he still owns both of them.
Both of them?
I think it's currently for sale, or if not, just recently sold, so.
Which one, 2130 or the back portion?
The back portion.
Where their old boneyard was back there, you mean?
Yeah.
All right, well, we don't need to.
We don't have to belabor it all, but we have, this is something that we need to figure out as a town, that if we're, if we have new developments here and we're expecting the public to use these roads, there's got to be some type of reasonable way that the public can expect to not destroy their vehicles.
Did you see what the easement say?
Right.
Yeah.
And I'll talk to the DPW director, because I know he's pretty knowledgeable of the road and why we plow it and all that. I just don't know that.
Okay, so do we have a second on this?
Second.
Okay, good. Moved and seconded.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken? Aiken, aye. Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Okay. Penfield Square 3, 4.
Penfield Square 3 and 4. I move to table pending further review, review by the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken? Aiken, aye. Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Okay. I think we're good. Nothing else?
That's all I have for you guys tonight.
Nothing else to cover tonight. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for hanging out, your participation.
Catherine was bored.
And we will adjourn. Our meeting is adjourned. See you in two weeks.